Thank you, Wendy. We are going to call the February 1st Urban Flood Safety Water Quality District Work Session Board Meeting to Order. Let's go ahead and take roll call.
Nancy Hendrickson. A few minutes ago, I know that she is quite busy trying to staff the impending strike. So let's see, Steve Fancher.
Here.
Eric Mueller.
Here.
Dave Ripman.
Here.
Seth Reiser.
Here.
Ashton Simpson. Ashton, Laura Stegman. Ken Anderson. Corky Collier.
Here.
James Allison.
Here.
Mary Helen Kincaid. Do not expect her, Channing Sappleton.
Here.
Eric Molander. Ed Washington indicated he would not be able to, oh, here comes Eric, Ed is not able to attend. Bob Salinger. And Heather King indicated she would not be able to attend. I see that Eric Molander is arriving.
Thanks, Wendy.
Eight board members.
Okay, we're not taking any votes today, so I think that is okay. I want to just remind folks, so Wendy, let you know a little bit more about the meeting. I'm just, you might not have read it in the email, but just to reiterate what she said. So we are going to, after this Urban Flood Safety Water Quality District Board Meeting, we're going to call the Levy-Ready Columbia IGA Board to order. They need to convene to hear the proposed budget required by the IGA we have with the entities involved in that group. And the board consists of most of you, not all of you, but all of the representatives of the contributing agency organizations to help Levy-Ready Columbia move along. And just another note that the second February meeting, the one on February 16th, will be both online and in person at the district offices. So as always, please let me or Wendy know if you're not able to attend. With that, we'll jump into the agenda. First up, we have Emily Robertson and Sarah O'Brien talking about the transition update. Take it away.
Sure, I can take this. There's a few streams of work that are ongoing that I just wanted to keep everyone up to speed on. I think the first thing is the guiding principles work. You'll recall there is a smaller group of board members that have been meeting to discuss those, and so they have met twice now, and we expect at the next meeting this month on the 16th that that group will come back to you all to kind of give an overview of their proposed edits, and then, once they're able to to check in with you all, move forward and meet another time to start making some changes to that draft. So expect to hear more about those at your next meeting from that group. As far as revenue collections, we did have staff meet with employees from the Water Bureau at the City of Portland, and they've been really helpful and open to collaboration. So it sounds like they're going to go back and have some internal conversations and get back to us on kind of how it possibilities for how this might work and some of the challenges we might face. The letter that you all discussed in one of the last couple of meetings was distributed to city managers from the other agencies outside of the City of Portland, and so everyone, all the city managers from the East County City should be aware of the issue and sort of our request. I think lastly, as far as timeline updates, just to keep you all in the loop, and I think the ECO presentation later will get into timeline a bit more and some of the specifics, but some of the things that we've been highlighting as far as modeling updates and adjusted forecasts, I think you can expect in March to hear, to have some discussion on geo bond scenarios, and then the adjusted forecast, I think it's looks like it will be coming early in April. So this geo bond, we haven't had nailed down exactly yet, and the forecast, I know we've been bouncing around on when we expect that to be discussed. And again, I think the ECO presentation today will talk a little bit more about some of those changes in the feedback and how that's incorporated. But that's what I have on ongoing work. Are there any questions?
Questions for Emily? I'll just emphasize, I guess, that the subgroup looking at the guiding principles, I think we're making really good progress. I think we've got a lot of concurrence on direction, and we'll be bringing, again, kind of these higher level concepts back to you to get approval from the board before we bring you an actual draft document pretty soon, but that's, that work is going well. Emily, did Sarah have anything to add to this, or is that, was that it?
I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to move on to our second item, which is a proposed process to develop a community and board member group, kind of a subgroup, to build some leadership around the geo bonds and gaining support and learning more about what the community would support with that. So I think, Aster, are you up next?
Yeah, I'm here with Jamie and Noah, and this is kind of like a two parter agenda. First, Jamie is going to go over our proposed process for boarding community liaisons, and then we're going to talk to you a little bit about our proposed key messages and talking points. And with that, I will pass it off to Jamie.
Great. Thanks, Aster. So we've just got a few slides for you for your consideration, and there are a couple of things I want to do to kind of remind you where we are in the process and why we're having this conversation about the boarding community liaisons. So this, of course, looks familiar. I think we said we were probably going to bring this in front of you nearly every board meeting to remind us where we are, and the red circle is where we are with the geo bond development process in process recommendations and the board and stakeholder input. So we're right at the beginning there, where we've talked with you about the process recommendations, we've talked with you about, you know, how we would like to move forward and what your role is. You've heard some things from Noah about the the geo bond process and what your part is in that. And one of the first steps in the geo bond process, if you recall, step one is to establish leadership. And so that's identifying the, what projects, here, let me need to get my screen. There we go. That's identifying the projects and the budget that will be decided at the board level, what the decision making process is, what is on the table for partners, and this authority of board and community liaisons and the liaison role. And so that's, I just wanted, this is the slide, one of the slides from Noah's presentation from last time, and I just wanted to remind you that, you know, we are at step one, and establishing this board and community liaisons group is an important part of that. So the purpose, just to remind you of board and community liaisons, you've heard me use the term kitchen table, you know, there's often a like a kitchen cabinet or a kitchen table group of folks as a part of any kind of a campaign that augments the capacity of the board and advises and advises you about, you know, it serves as a link back to broader communities of interest. And so we know as a 17-member board, you represent a wide range of the residents and stakeholders and businesses and interests within the district. But we also recognize, you know, from our one-on-one conversations and from discussions that you've had, that, you know, there are some folks that are missing. And so we want to be able to work together to refine this approach for engaging communities of interest and historically underserved communities in the work of the district, and we would like this group to synthesize information gathered from the community input and provide the board with recommendations to help guide the liberation and decision making. So as, you know, once we launch our community engagement efforts, you know, we wanted to, we want to right-size the engagement, meaning that, you know, we're not, it's not going to be exhaustive, it's going to be the best that we can all do to gather, get people's attention and to engage them in these topics. And the board and community liaisons is a small nimble group to help bridge what we're hearing from the community with what that, what that means for the board's decision making. One other point I want to make about the purpose is, we talked with the steering team and we talked internally with our consultant team about, you know, should this group be subject to Oregon Publics Meeting Laws? Is it a work group? Is it a staff group? Is it advisory group? And ultimately, where we landed is, we do want this group to be subject to Oregon Publics Meeting, Public Meetings Law. We want it to be noticed. We want opportunities for other board members to be able to track and follow and, you know, come to these meetings if you would like, and it's just another touch point for the broader public for transparency and for them to follow along, you know, with our work. And it gives this group a little more authority when they're making recommendations, you know, to the, to the board. And they, this group couldn't make recommendations to you if they were a staff, you know, like a staff work group or something other than an advisory committee. So we're proposing that we work within the Oregon Public Meeting Law and make sure that these meetings are noticed and open. So our approach is, we would like the chair to appoint up to three board members, and we've had conversations with your chair about, about his role and about this, about this committee and this, this work group and what this we're trying to do. And, and we've come up with some criteria that we thought would be really helpful to, for the board appointments and to ensure that the board liaisons are representative of the range of interests on the board. And note that one person can wear multiple hats, fill multiple roles. And so we would like a person with environmental expertise, a person with community engagement expertise, a person with connections to stakeholders in the managed floodplain, a person who represents East County and a person who represents Portland. And again, you know, I think that when you look around your table, you know that there are people who wear multiple hats, and, and so one person could fill multiple of these roles. And so this is my last slide, and I just wanted to touch on this. And so there's the board liaisons, and then there's the community liaisons. And so the community liaisons, we're thinking four to six people, but we would really like to work with the board liaisons to help flesh that out, to identify what are the interests that we need to augment the board's capacity and understanding and complement the interests that are represented on the board. How many people make sense? How can we build on the work that has already been going on with conversations in the business community and with underserved, and underrepresented and underserved communities through the work of Cascadia? You know, are there some ways that we can leverage that work and build on relationships that we've, we've already got, you know, beginning to get established? And so the board liaisons would work with us, with staff and, and the consultant team to develop criteria for identifying the community liaison participants, and the board liaisons would bring that back to all of you. So, so the ask at this point, and I want to end my show here and go back to all of you. And so the ask is, you know, folks that are interested to throw their hat in the ring, who maybe fit multiple roles of the criteria that we've outlined, who, who have an interest to work with Aster and Aster's team and Noah and I and Cascadia to advance this conversation. So I'm going to pause there, and Chair Fancher, I don't know if there's anything that you want to add here?
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Aster. I've put some thought into this already too, and it, you know, it is it's a delicate balance to try to get folks that, that wear enough hats to try to fill kind of all the desired roles here. So I've got my own ideas about who I would kind of throw, and I haven't spoken with everybody that I'm thinking of, but I would love to, maybe after we've had a conversation, circle back at some point and talk about how we can move this forward and keep, keep the number again manageable, keep it to three or less and focus in knowing where certain board members are already spending their time on kind of other efforts related to this, not asking too much of any one person.
Aster, anything else from you?
I think, you know, we're open to your questions, comments, feedback about this process. Yeah, please let us know if you're uncomfortable with it in any way. We definitely want, want the, everyone to feel good about this proposed process.
So questions, thoughts, folks who want to throw their hat in the ring for us to follow up with? Counselor Simpson?
Thank you. Sorry I was late, everybody. I would love to partake in the community engagement aspect of it. I think that's much, one of my strong suits. And working with Noah, I think it'll be great again. It's been a while. But sign me up for that piece there, and, and I can fill in on how I could support in other spaces as, as things move on, but definitely around community engagement.
That's awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Other questions? Any other questions or thoughts or folks who want to throw their hat in the ring? Corky?
I'm willing to give it a shot. At least I can be there to say, yeah, what Counselor Simpson just said, yeah, that's, that sounds like a good idea. So I'll, I'll see if I can help out any of you'd like my input.
So we have, we have a cheering section for Counselor Simpson. Great. Thanks, Corky.
I guess maybe I'll pipe in and say, thank you, both of you, and you were both on my list, my shortlist, so thank you so much. Thinking about kind of the environmental aspect of this and how strongly he represents this area, I was thinking of Bob Salinger for the third seat here, and I know he's not, he's not in attendance today, but I just want to throw that out in complete transparency that planning on reaching out to Bob to, to do that.
And just a side note, he's not in attendance today because it's his last day at Audubon.
After 30-plus years, to my knowledge, quite an impressive run with Audubon Society.
And he did confirm with me that Audubon would like him to remain their environmental rep. Tom Brady and Bob, that's, that's an interesting observation.
So I don't know that they're going to switch roles. This isn't some sort of perverse movie.
I'm not recommending Tom Brady.
To the Bob Salinger, Tom Brady movie. I think that'll be really good.
That would be something. Well, so that's everything we had. I think that, you know, as we, as we talked with you at previous board meetings, we're going to be coming to you every board meeting, every work session with some aspect of the geo bond process as it's unfolding. So there's no surprises. You're, you're, you're well informed, and this is step one. So thank you for your consideration of this.
And one final word for me is just to recall that through the PMLS study and the LRC and Levy-Ready Columbia work on the FEMA projects and our assets and liabilities report of a pretty significant percentage of our program is fairly well-defined already, and so there's a small area, I think, where this community feedback is going to be really valuable.
Yeah, thanks for that, Jim. Back to you, Chair Fancher. Or actually, I think we're on next, aren't we, Aster?
We are, yeah. I think it's, I'll pass it off to Noah Segal, who will give you a little bit more information about our proposed key messages and talking points for the Flood Safe Columbia River Initiative. So I'll pass it off to Noah.
Thank you, Aster. Yeah, I'm back for a, I got invited back, so I think that's a good sign. We have, Jamie's running the slides here, so I can see the notes. But I know that a number of members on the, of the board are, were interested in getting a hold of core talking points, and that's essentially what we have in this deck, but I also think it's important to walk through how we arrived at those and to give some backend. So the link to our communications and engagement strategy is clear, give everybody a chance to ask some questions, and you'll see that these points and the approach is supported by the data that we've gathered through public opinion research. So that's the goal here, is to walk you through the building blocks of those core messages and then end up with some next steps around them. So we can jump right in. I'm going to, there are four separate sections of this presentation, and I think what I'll do is just pause a little bit as I, before I move into the next section and see if there are any questions. How much time do I have, Aster?
I think we have until two, but Wendy or Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, so that would be 35 minutes.
Okay, so I'll, I'll try to pace myself and leave good time for discussion, see, to rather air on that side. So yeah, moving into the core parts of the present, presentation, we just want to talk about the role of messaging in the bond measure and, you know, in the overall what we're calling Flood Safe Columbia River Initiative. These things are interconnected, the operating funds, the bond measure, and the eventual election of the permanent board. Can go to the next slide. And, and then, you know, so what's the role of messaging around this? What are the key messages themselves and, and the data that supports them? And then looking at message, how we deliver those messages and the importance of collective message discipline, all of us consultants, staff, electeds, board members, why it's important that we unify around core messages. So just as a reminder, you know, I love to take credit on the, go to the next slide. I love to take credit for a good turn of phrase, but there's a science behind this, and so I just wanted to remind everybody that with your support, we did a pretty significant polling exercise in June of 2022. That was a sample size of 660 people, oversampling for voters of, based on registered voters, which is sort of a normal approach to polling. And oversampling voters of color to make sure that we had good representative responses with a margin of error of just around 4%. And then we followed up some of our, you know, from that, we, we had working messages that we were shaping, and then we followed up with focus groups in October. We did four groups of focus, of, for focus groups to try out those messages as well as images and spokespeople and to see how people respond, how real people responded to that. For any of you who have built, been involved in focus groups before, it's not scientific, but there are definitely some aha moments when you're like, you think you've got it, you know, you think you've got the message and it just flops when you put it in front of real people, or they come up with something that just seems totally inspiring and clear in the middle of the session. So you kind of look for those things in the focus group. So we tested westsiders and eastsiders to get a sense of how proximity affected people's thinking about the Columbia slough and the levees. We looked at lower income folks in the region, mostly renters, and then specifically property owners, and we looked at property owners outside the the flood zone insurance area, because we wanted to make sure we were talking to folks who weren't dialed in about their self-interest, like we're trying to understand what, what would folks who aren't directly affected by this, what would they say about, about this new initiative? So just a bit of a recap on the next slide around, you know, the purpose of messaging itself. These are the key things, and I'll just keep going to the next slide because I go down into these one at a time. So this is a reminder that, in a sense, we have a pretty good position looking at a moving this initiative forward, both operating funds and levy, we added those up, and there, there's pretty strong some, like 66% total support is, is good, like that, that's, that's a place you'd like to be if you're putting in something in front of voters. Very low hardcore opposition at 10%. So there aren't a lot, you know, sometimes you, you run a initiative and you have a built-in 35, 40% opposition, and that makes it really tough. So generally, people seem inclined to support this, but that light blue line is really soft. Those are the somewhat support folks, so they just don't know very much going on to the next slide. And so the messaging becomes really, really important when you're talking about, you're asking something that, you know, seems okay to them, but they don't really know what it's all about. And so the messages that come out become even more important than they would on any other issue. And you see that effect here after we walk through the positive messages around what this investment would do. That solid support jump nearly doubles up to 40% on the right there. And, and the overall support moves to 72%. So that's an indication of the power of messaging around this work. At the same time, I will say, just as a caution, that we didn't test any negative messages. And that's what you would do in a more aggressive campaign environment. So those soft supporters could just as easily be moved into opposition by good negative messages. So getting the right messaging really matters, and, you know, it's important, in the bond presentation, I, you know, I shared that we, we just don't know how much outside support will come in through a funded campaign. That's, you know, one way you would move persuasion ahead of an election. So these, these educational messages, as we move through this process, coming from the staff and from the board members, they carry a lot of weight in shaping what people's perceptions are of this. And on that, yeah, just to emphasize something I said already on the next slide, I think most of you are aware of this already, but the issue that we're raising with them, they just have very low awareness of it as a threat. You can see there, when, when given a range of, of, of natural disasters that whether man-made or not, that they, you know, that they're worried about flooding is, is down at the very bottom. And in the focus groups, you know, we heard things like this on the left, like, you know, the earthquake will come before this ever happens. And there was also a lot of confusion in the focus groups because people associate climate change with drier weather, hotter weather, and so they don't associate it with flooding. I think there are some opportunities around what's happened in California and elsewhere to move the dial on that, but that's where people start out, and that's a challenge for us. So on the next slide, we just talk, we, you know, the messaging consistency, especially from our stakeholders and, you know, people who may be on the fence or are trusted messengers out there to the public, becomes really important. Almost nobody knows what a drainage district is. There are a lot of variables out there, so, you know, having a shared message discipline. And this comes at a time when elected officials are at an all-time low in terms of trust. So we collectively, how we talk about this becomes really important as we move into the specific messages themselves. So that's the end of the first segment. Any questions just about the role of, of messaging? And the considerations we're taking into account? I'm flipping through the names, but I'm not seeing any hands up. All right. Well, I'll jump into the key messages themselves. And it's really three, three, and a, three messages and a supporting message, or what I would call a call to action at the end of it. And I'll read them out, just so you can sort of hear them as well as read them, and then I'll go through more detail about each, each of the messages, but we're saying the major floods are increasing with climate change and the Portland region is at risk. Flood, flooding risks, actually, I want to change this word catastrophic. That didn't work as well in focus groups as devastating. So flooding risks devastating damage to vulnerable communities, water quality and the environment. Fortunately, there is a straightforward solution, and with some small changes, this is the call to action, we can get big outcomes. So those are the, that's the sequence of messages we've landed on. So moving to the next slide, I'll explain a little bit more about how we arrived at that and some of the supporting messages for, you know, sub-messages for each of those messages. So on this first point, it's really important, we have a bit of a challenge ahead of us, you know, there's no getting around that we are here for flood protection. And flood protection is not perceived to be a major threat. a major threat by most voters in the region when they, in the focus groups, when we talked about flooding, they mostly talked about their storm drains and local creeks. They didn't really have a sense of the Columbia, and, and when we asked them about flooding, their orientation was almost exclusively towards the Willamette River, that, that just, I think for Portlanders, and people in the Portland area, the Willamette really dominates their consciousness unless you're in Troutdale or something and you're right by the Columbia. Um, most people just don't think about it that much. It's kind of weird. It's a, so one of the talking points that we've been weaving in for the website is this second supporting one, which is the Columbia is one of the world's largest, most powerful rivers. So just a reminder that this massive river is right there. That it's happened before, it's happened here before and will happen again. And, um, and we are, no, that's good Nancy. Yeah. So I mean, anything we can do to sort of remind people they live next to this, you know, massive mother nature thing, you know, river up, up there and that we're not, um, um, we're not meeting federal standards for flood protection. And this last one is, is tricky legally. We've been working on it with Hong. We want to make sure that, um, you know, uh, that we're not overstepping in the sense that, um, they're not, you know, we're not under a mandate to do this. We're choosing to do it. Um, so that we can meet standards for flood insurance and the recommended standards by FEMA. But nevertheless, that, that, that talking point was very strong in the focus groups, like people, when people realize we are not up to snuff. So we want to work that in. Oh, looks like this is um, actually Jamie, can I switch over and share mine? Because mine is updated. I was wrong. I have, um, updated slides with better images. Do you mind if I put up mine?
Yeah, not, not a problem.
I'm just noticing here that it says, put up an image.
I know, I saw that too. I wondered, it's like, what? Put up an image, Noah, get one up there.
Well, I will. Thank you. Uh, no, I'm wrong. Sorry, Jamie, I'm wrong. I, I, we really are just missing that image. That's embarrassing. So forgive me, everybody.
You want me to keep screen sharing?
Yeah, just put it, put it back up again. Thank you. Anyway, uh, we're working through a bunch of images for the website right now. Um, but, um, uh, I do want to just go in back into the polling for a second and talk about this issue of climate change. So on the next slide, um, you'll see that we have kind of a double challenge. We need to make the connection to flooding. And then it really helps us to make the flooding connection to climate change. And here's why, because you look at the top concerns amount in the polling about around people in Multnomah County. And just to remind everybody, this is, you know, these are our voters. This is not um, a climate denial environment. The people do care about climate change. It's their number one concern in the region. So to the extent that we are able, you know, flooding on the Columbia River on its own is down there at the bottom. So we need to make that connection to larger, um, themes and issues that people care about. Going on to the next slide, the, um, it happened here before is a compelling message. A large number of people, thanks, I think to a lot of public education, do know now about the Vanport floods now. Um, and that's important and it's a really big part of the story. At the same time, we've, in the focus groups, we found that just the black and white photos just look ancient to people. Like if we're trying to say this is an imminent threat, these kinds of photos, although they found this very compelling, it's just seems like a long time ago and people are thinking about more present threats. So we've said it happened here before and we go into the next slide. And visually you'll see this on the website and it will happen again. And here are examples all around us on the West Coast. Um, quite recently of things that we're dealing with, a failed pump station in British Columbia, um, levy breaches in Pendleton and atmospheric rivers in California, which were just all over the news. So we want to really drill it, drill home that this is a current threat. It's just by the grace of God for us, not for California, but that that atmospheric river went south of us and it could happen here next month or next year. So really making that connection, it happened here before and will happen again. The next, um, slide hits at the second major message, which is, um, that, you know, what would, what, what, so, so what? So what happens? And, you know, we're saying that large floods would cause um, severe damage to vulnerable communities, water quality and the environment. Those are all poll tested terms. Those are the top concerns that people responded to. Um, um, but these are supporting messages that also perform very well, especially in the focus group. So that we have this system of flood control that's hidden in plain sight. So they, a lot of people were like, where is it? I haven't ever seen it. So this notion that there's this thing operating that protects us that's hidden in plain sight. I give full credit to Aster for that uh, turn of phrase. It's really compelling and it protects our region. And then that flows into the next one, which is really compelling, which is it's nearly a hundred years old and requires urgent upgrades. And, um, and why does it require urgent upgrades? Because, and again, this is poll tested, if they were, if it were to fail, toxins, raw sewage, pollution would flow into rivers and streams, um, and drinking water. It's a massive concern for people. And then, uh, people, human beings, residents, workers, and all of the workers, um, and small businesses that are linked into that region, um, would be affected. A couple of small points on language here. We've really, um, focused in on specific words. So upgrades um, works very well. Um, but, um, things like modernization are too fancy and things like fixes are too simple and probably not bond compliant anyway. So we're really looking, we're really using the term upgrades for what we need to do on the levees and the equipment. And then on business, just a very strong emphasis on the human beings, small business, not on Amazon, um, or, um, big business, that just doesn't, is not compelling. Um, it's the people who are affected. That's what's compelling. So just, um, going on to the next slide, um, this just drives home the point that I was making that the things that people really worry about when we ask them about um, a failure of our flood control system are the drinking water, pollution, displacement of vulnerable communities, um, more pollution. So that's why that figures so prominently um, in our talking points. Um, and you remember from the, um, bond, the, the ballot title president, uh, deck, the slides that I showed last week. Sometimes, you know, we really need, it's, it's not a question of whether it's true or not true. It's just emphasis. So the levy, the levy upgrades will do lots of things. The pump station upgrades will do lots of things, but these are the things people care about the most. And so we're emphasizing that. Um, like that example around fish and metro that I shared last time. Um, going on to the next slide, um, these are the things that motivated people, um, to make Jane, make these upgrades. So the fear of pollution, the concern around vulnerable communities and equity, which I think, um, you know, links back hi- historically to Vanport. And really, you know, emphasizes that vulnerable people, vulnerable jobs, working people, they really care about that. And the notion of prevention, an ounce of prevention for a pound of cure really is compelling for people. And it was in the focus groups too. Um, um, as was the idea of the federal match. So that'll show up again in our call to action. So what this means for me, and as we started testing messengers, is that it's really compelling in our messaging when we have a combination of technical fixes, prevention, good investments, um, doing the nuts and bolts stuff with the feel-good outcomes around preventing pollution. Um, may, you know, keeping nat- the natural environment clean, um, protecting health and vulnerable communities. We have to be able, a successful message will weave those together. And we, just some evidence of that. Just going on to the next slide. Um, this was one thing that the focus group respondent said, you know, we're always reactive. You wait for something terrible to happen and we need to move ahead and do that first. Um, people that got a lot of head nods. On the next slide, um, we tested um, at Washington, um, as a messenger, very good response. Talking about the people-first approach, um, having it be a reminder, a warning of what can happen in the future. Um, and then on the next slide, Bob, we tested as a messenger from a nature perspec- oh no, sorry. That's another, that's another slide. So the third, um, top-line message, as we call it, is there is a straightforward solution. And this was kind of an aha moment that came out of the focus groups, which was people were really afraid that this was a boondoggle, that this was the Columbia River Crossing came up a lot, that it'll be super complicated and huge cost overruns. And one of the things that they found most compelling was that, um, there's a typo there, by the way, sorry. It should be vulnerable, raise vulnerable. Um, one of the things that they found compelling is that this is pretty straightforward. We need to raise vulnerable sections of the levees of the flood protection walls and upgrade aging equipment. And it's, you know, it's, it's straightforward. We know how to do it. It's got a price tag and, uh, a timeline and that's that. Um, by doing those simple, cost-effective fixes, solutions, um, the benefits are huge. We'll save lives, homes, environmental quality and money. And, um, by integrating nature, people, um, into prevention, people get really excited. And then the match. So we don't have to do this on our own. There's a hundred million dollars out there to help us do it. So that sequence of it's not that complicated. If we make these changes, we get huge benefits. And there's money out there for us to get it done. That really works, um, in delivering the message. And just to drive home this point on the next couple of slides. Um, I think I've made all of these points already, but the two, um, other messengers that this is one of, this Kevin, one of our own engineers at MCDN and um, they really liked this message from him that, you know, giving the information. Well, oh, I didn't know there was blood control infrastructure. This was really important for people. Um, and just the sort of basic engineer, engineers tested as one of our, our most trusted messengers in the polling. So that works. And also on the next slide, um, um, this notion of that they heard from Bob as a messenger integrating flood control in the environment, that seems comprehensive. Somebody said, oh, that's a very, a very Portland solution. Um, so we get a lot of extra support by making it not like technology versus nature, but by making this an integrated message. So I really wanted to, to share that outcome with you. Then finally, um, the last uh, thing is, is what I said really is a call to action. So what's this all about? We got these messages. Um, what are you asking of us? And a lot of people in the focus group said, all right, get to the point. What do you, what do we have to pay? And, uh, so, you know, by making these investments now, we can keep our community safe. And we're talking about modest bond measure. Um, no, you know, probably around, I don't know, sixty dollars a year for the average household. That seemed pretty reasonable in the focus groups and the polling, but you guys will work that out. It's a small, you know, that includes a small fee to manage for flood protection and a district board that will oversee the work and be accountable. That's our call to action. That's what we're asking you to do. It's a package. This is flood safe Columbia River. It comes together. Um, it's kind of not a big deal, but it's kind of a huge deal. Like it doesn't take much, but the benefits are tremendous. Those are the four messages, um, and the, and the ways that we got there. Um, I'd love, I'll pause again and just see if there are, I'll check the chat, questions around those. I may not see everyone, Esther, so let me know.
Maybe I'll just chime in real quick. Noah, I think this is really good work, obviously.
Steve, I think you're muted.
I'm muted. I'm sorry. I was just piping in to say, I think this is really good work. I think the, you've hit all of the right messages. Um, I, I mean, I've always felt like the arguments were extremely strong for the geo-bond. Um, I think things have changed a little bit since twenty twenty-two, but all of the messages are the same. Um, I think we still have, uh, a great, um, great positive, um, chance of passing this, but I think you're hitting the right notes.
Thank you. It's encouraging. Uh, and I want to thank the the staff too, because we worked on this with them and really refined it, um, as well. So there's a lot of good thinking around this. Looks like there are some other hands raised.
Ja- James had his up first and then Nancy and then Eric.
Yeah.
Thank you, Noah. Great work. Interesting. And, um, like Steve Fancher said, it's nice to see your, your expertise applied to what a lot of us feel intuitively and to see this validated and, and refined. So thank you. I have a question that's not really urgent, but the one that comes to mind is as we eventually move toward putting something in front of the voters that has financial implications, how do you probe for who might officially uh, oppose this? In other words, there are individuals who may not like this, but do you have any way of, of, um, at some point, knowing if groups, interest groups, groups might come out against something like this? Thank you.
Yeah, that's, I, right. That's an interesting question. I, I think the answer is that there are informal and formal ways that opposition could be articulated. So in the run-up, you know, I, and this is why I emphasize stakeholders and message discipline, like just keep key, um, stakeholders, if they're expressing doubts, going to the papers, et cetera, that can be difficult, um, for an initiative like this. So that's more of an engagement effort in a way of, of being good communication, being in touch, making sure that, you know, while different stakeholders may care more or less about different elements of this message and this initiative that collectively they're rowing in the same direction. The first signs of, you know, true opposition would be in a ballot title challenge and then registering um, an actual campaign committee to oppose. Um, you know, the most minimal form of opposition would be you register a campaign committee, you get a few people to, um, put opposition, um, voter pamphlet statements in. And depending on who they are and how compelling they are, that could have some effect. Um, so all of that would be kind of free. And then, you know, if there's a campaign against, then you would look and see how much money is going into it. So those are things to track. I don't see any of that right now. I'm just sharing with you in general, you're an answer.
And Noah, I'll, I'll add to that, saying that, you know, it's often the business community that can be opposed to various bond measures. And we have done some very early outreach, um, through our contract with Praxis Political and Jake Widler. He's been talking to um, some businesses, both inside and outside of the managed floodplain, just letting them know that this investment is coming, not giving any, any, you know, official details. And, you know, we'll start using this messaging once, um, once it's implemented and rolling. But I just wanted to say that, you know, so far we haven't heard any major opposition. Um, most, uh, businesses, um, are like, you know, this seems like a, a necessary investment that will benefit the region.
Great. Thank you, Esther.
Nancy?
Thanks. I just wanted to say that, um, we were meeting earlier on the, uh, Eric, Steve and I were meeting earlier today, talking about, oops, this will be better, talking about, um, the guiding principles and the word integrated floodman- flood management came up. So I'm glad to hear that that word is resonating with people. Um, because we were wondering if it would. So that's really interesting to hear in the same day that it actually resonates with the public.
Yeah, it does. And I, and I want to recognize that I know there's a conversation going on about, you know, what nature-based solutions, you know, are eligible for the bond. That's not my job, but from a messaging perspective, that integration, as you said, really does resonate and it, it helps us tap into, um, you know, a subset of the voters. So thanks for sharing that. Eric?
Um, one of the things I'd like you to at least look into so that you get an image of it is in Sacramento, there was a levy breach that was caused by the internal flooding. And, um, I have a sister that lives in Sacramento and she knows of my work here on the levy and she said, well, Eric, are you guys concerned about that as well? I said, of course we are. Um, flash flood inside of this bathtub that we've created uh, is, could be really devastating. Uh, is, could be really devastating. And she had mentioned that somebody had died in Sacramento associated with that levy breach, so. Uh, again, here's a case in which uh we can say we were learning from what happened in California. And it's real and it's devastating.
I, I love that, we're, we're doing a few, a section of the website that's very much along those lines, so that's incredibly helpful, I didn't realize the levy had been breached, so thank you, we'll, 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 let me circle back on that. That's great, Dave?
Yes, I uh, on the arguments, um, I wasn't uh. I was surprised at the, the pitch, in other words, that's made to the, the voters. Um. I just want to confirm, you mean, the fact that. Um, this system that we're developing uh protects major economic investments. And, and job centers and that sort of thing. That was not mentioned, uh, and so I just wonder that, that didn't play with the voters?
That's correct, it polls very low and I, I don't have the slides here, but um. Um, people either don't believe it or, you know, I think there's a tendency to see, oh, well, if it's a major economic thing, the business will cover it. Um, so no, it's, it's not very compelling on its own.
Well, I'm a fan of the airport, you know, that's.
The airport as a standalone answer, um, does, does feature. Um, in people's responses, that was the one, that's the one thing, and I do think, I'm just looking back, I think. One of our. Maybe it didn't make it into this deck, but it may be. I think it's on our website, we, so yeah, I agree, we should emphasize the airport uh more.
And just chime in a little bit, Councilor Ripma and others. Um, these are really the high level for, for most voters, but we'll also be doing additional products, for example, when we meet maybe with Corky's Board. Or with Portland Business Alliance where we might shift the emphasis a little bit to some of the economic implications when we're talking to a business audience. So remember, this is sort of a high-level guidepost based on the qualitative and quantitative research to date. But specific audiences will require some specific messaging and information as well.
Yeah, and I'll add that, you know, we have been using those economic talking points with the business community so far and that has resonated. So yeah, just to emphasize Jim's point.
Yeah, and one more thing I'll add is, you know, when, when we ask people about, you know, the, when they think about like Amazon, you know, they're just like, ah, you know, we don't. We don't really care about Amazon, but they don't have a good sense of all the businesses that are in, that are uh vulnerable, you know, within the district, there's a wide range of businesses, small and large. And so help, helping to educate people about the range of businesses um in the area and how many workers. There are is really an important part of what we're going to be trying to do.
And, and I think Jim's point is the right one, if, that, that's correct, these are high-level talking points, so if, if, if you're asking the direct question, will. This area as an economic center and the threat to it, will that resonate and be a big difference maker? In the election, the answer seems to be no, not at a high level with most voters, but it doesn't hurt. And it does matter to a lot of people, um, and so it's important, it's an important part of what we're doing. In the Coalition Building and um a, around this effort, so you know, just because something isn't a top line for every voter, doesn't mean it's not an important message. Okay, yeah. Corky?
Corky, you're muted.
You know, one of these days I'll figure that out, thanks. Um, on, on that particular point, uh. You know, I, I think we can message that in a way, and Noah, you touched on this in your presentation, I think. Where you message away where we're talking about, in particular BIPOC, family wage jobs. I mean, that's what, that's what we're trying to protect, are we trying to protect that, Amazon, no. But if Amazon floods, there's a whole lot of people that will be out of jobs and guess what, it's disproportionately BIPOC. Uh, so it's, you know, I, I know you're going to be able to work this, you know, work through this, but I, I, that's my comment is. Focus on those jobs, not necessarily on the business itself, that's what I do all day long is, you know, even though the businesses are members, that's not what we're concerned about, we're concerned about the jobs.
I, I totally agree, Corky, I mean, it's about the people and I do want to say that, um, you know, I talked about how we had in the four focus groups, we had the. Lower income, more, and east siders and it was evident that lower income people, that we had some truck drivers. Um, uh, supply chain like heating, you know, HVAC folks. They were much more aware of the geography of, uh, of the Columbia and. It's important to them, it, 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 you know, people on the west side really had no idea. Um, but people who were in and out of there picking stuff up, delivering, they knew about it, and so. Um, I think that it's super important, uh, so yeah, we can continue to refine that with a focus on people, working people. Um, and the effects on them, I, I agree, I think it's really important.
And Noah, I'm glad to sit down with you, happy to sit down with you and, and give you some more data from B P S, from Portland B P S. Uh, that speaks to exactly that point and it's what we found too, if you go to East Portland. Uh, in, in walking into the neighborhoods, they know that those are where the good jobs are. Which would, if that's the area that would be flooded, as opposed to a crummy, you know, middle, uh, minimum wage shop. Uh, the, and so, yeah, we can dive into this more. The, the other thing I wanted to point out is, I, my suggestion is also be a little bit careful on some of the messaging, I know you're working through it. I saw, you know, the urgent, or, you know, some urgent needs in there, uh, and I guess I would be concerned about that because. I'm not sure that there's anything really urgent right now, you know, we are trying to upgrade. In anticipation of, well, climate change problems. Uh, and I think people will understand that, I mean, essentially this started. Because the federal government said, we need to increase our, our requirements based on Hurricane, Hurricane Katrina, which is. Really also climate change, so climate change is here, federal government has increased requirements. We've got a good system, such a good system, that the federal government really likes us, we're a showcase. And they're giving us more than normal amounts of money, so let's make sure we match. For that, to take advantage of those high contributions from the federal government. And as you said, the, the solutions are relatively simple, this is not really complicated stuff, I think that's a pretty good selling point.
Thanks, Corky. Um, I know we're out of time, so let me just, um, thank, thank you for all those questions and it's always helpful to refine, I'll just point out that we're. Taking these messages and building out um the flood safe Columbia River website. Um, which you get a little sample of here and then next steps after that will be. Uh, or along with that, um, are materials like one-pagers that everybody can share, um, trainings for key messengers. And we're working on a social media strategy that'll be queued up and ready to go around flooding events, so like, uh, for example, the. California flooding, we'd like to be in a position to put out, you know, it could happen here messages. Um, on social media and have that ready to roll. Um, so all of these messages will flow into those strategies. Um, we need to be ready on the next slide with a key frequently asked questions document so that we're able to follow up when people do pay attention, like. You know, hey, what's this, what's this, um. You know, what are the answers to some of these questions? And then just finally, I'll just say that around message discipline, which is what we're all sort of trying to come to here. Um, we need to, you know, our messages are more trusted when they come from messengers that aren't government, so the more that we're able to share these messages collectively, the better. Clear answers to tough questions, so we don't want, you know, different narratives about the same initiative to the extent possible. And we don't want to be reactive, so getting out there and telling our own story is the goal. Um, I mean, I'll stop there, but that's, uh, there's more to talk about, but I think that's the, the, the heart of it. Um, so I'll, I'll pass it back to, to uh. Steve, yeah.
Excellent, thank you, Noah, great presentation, thanks, everybody. I'm gonna introduce the next topic and then turn the chair seat over because I have to leave early today. Um, the next topic. Um, we're gonna have Sarah Reich talk about the revenue analysis modeling updates. And James is not in a great position because he's on his phone driving, so I've asked. Tanny Staffinson to take over as the, the chair just for the rest of the meeting, Tanny, um, you're still here and okay with that?
Uh, yeah, that's fine, Steve.
Excellent, thank you, thank you, everybody, we'll see you uh at the next meeting.
All right. Are we ready to, can, can everyone see the presentation, are you seeing it in? Big mode? All right, the technical worked out today. Hello, everyone, nice to see you again, uh, so today we are going to walk through, um, as promised when we last talked to you. Um, where we are with the modeling updates and the, the purpose of uh this. I, i- in coming to you with this is to let you know what we've been hearing over the last um couple of months and what we're going to do with that information. Um, so as uh someone alluded to at the very beginning. Um, maybe it was Steve, uh, will be walking you through kind of a, a little preview of the, the next steps. In this, but first I want to start with where we've been, just because you all are very busy and I want to make sure we're all on the same page, um, reminding you of, of. Of what we said we would do and, and when we did it and how we did it, so. Um, back in November, we came to you with the first run results of the revenue model using the revenue forecast. That, um, that was in place, so that, uh, the team had developed um at that time. Uh, we've presented those results to you and during that um presentation and I believe the following presentation, we had some good discussion. Um, about what you were seeing and some potential modifications to, to what you were seeing. We told you at that point that we were going to enter a process uh using our technical advisory group to go. To them with some of the technical questions about how to make some of those modifications and to get their input on some specific questions that we. Had, um, had, had identified as we were developing and evaluating the first run results of the model. So we did that in, uh, at the end of December, we convened the tag and reconvened them at the beginning of January. Um, to continue the conversation and during that time, they uh provided feedback on a, a set of questions that we had put together for them. On potential model adjustments, so they weighed in on that, knowing that they're not decision makers. Um, so from a technical perspective, they provided feedback and um they also. We asked them to, to weigh in on how we were displaying the um. Showing the model outputs and some specific data gaps, those last two points. Um, we did not get to in as much detail as the first point with them. Um, because there was so much that, uh, that everyone wanted to weigh in on the model adjustments themselves. Um, so we have been open to receiving feedback via email and um. Uh, and other ways of getting in touch and have received some of that feedback that way. Um, during that, those two tag meetings, Lori also prevented, uh, presented and reviewed the revenue forecast assumptions. So I want to keep that in mind, since that's such a critical input to the revenue model, we're not going to be talking about those today. Uh, Lori will be back later to talk about that, but that was something that was, that the tag. That she was discussing with the tag. Uh, so, we have received several um other direct feedback from board members and, and tag members and all of this feedback has been really useful in the discussion. So today, what we're going to do is summarize what we've heard um on these requested changes and um respond to those requested changes with the, what, how we propose to move forward and addressing them. After today's meeting, we're going to, over the next few months, um incorporate these new assumptions into the model, the, the. The infrastructure of the model and the way that it outputs the, the data for you all to look at. Um. Then we will uh confirm the next iteration of the revenue forecast, that's Lori will be working on that, but that serves as an input and we can't run the model without. Um, that revised, it doesn't make a lot of sense to run the model without the revised revenue forecast as part of it. Um, we will prepare those revised model outputs for uh internal review and as part of that will be. Um, evaluating the, uh, the results against some of the equity criteria that we have talked with you about, um, so the equity criteria. Our analysis um will come with the revised revenue model results, there were a lot of questions that got into territory of. Sort of equity and distribution and I think that having that additional information next time you look at everything will help to fill in some of those gaps. And then, um, at the end of all of this, uh, we will return next to you, um, at the end of this period. Uh, with the director's recommended revenue structure for consideration. And I'm going to turn it over to Colin for a minute here to provide a little bit more context before we run it, turn into the. The actual changes we're proposing.
Thanks, Sarah, um, hi, Colin Rowan, the um director of planning, public affairs for M C D D and I just wanted to. Give a little bit more context on that director's recommendation, just because um. Beginning the meeting as Emily was reviewing some of the ongoing work as well as the presentation uh that we had a couple of weeks ago, we mentioned, um, just uh. How many conversations need to be had around the revenue collection and how that happens to be one of our thorniest issues, so we are continuing to make really. Good progress on that as far as um developing a better understanding of what is possible around revenue collection. Um, and staff is also beginning to develop some alternative options uh that would potentially include a interim funding solution, so something that. Might be uh put into place for a few years as we figure out the rest of the funding details, so we don't have a proposal right now, but we are developing that and. Will be reaching out especially to representatives at the different cities, uh, hoping to get in front of. Um, some decision makers uh around what is possible either with the existing utility billing or some other type of arrangement. Uh, most likely through uh intergovernmental agreements. Um, and we do know that regardless of the path forward, uh, we have pretty high confidence that we'll need to develop some of those I G A's revenue collection, so. Um, what that means in the context of all this revenue modeling is that we still need to develop everything for the um. The actual uh revenue forecast, uh, we need to make the updates to this model, um, but we may bring uh to the board. For consideration and direction, uh, some alternative funding pathways that might be for the next few years, so. More on that soon, uh, sorry that we don't have a whole lot of details, but uh it's all based on this knowledge around just how difficult the revenue collection uh nut is to crack. Um, so I'll hand it back over to Sarah, um, you can take any questions at the end, thank you.
Okay. All right, so hold your questions, we'll, we'll get there, um, okay. So, uh, we've organized the feedback that we received from all of you into three categories. Uh, there was a, a collection of feedback on the inputs to the model. There is a collection of, of feedback on the assumptions within the model and then a collection of feedback on the, the way that you are, get. That we organize that and, and present that as outputs and so you'll see three slides here where we've aggregated the, the, what we've heard. Um, and then I'll go through how we're going to address it sequentially. So here are the, here's the, the main themes of feedback on the inputs. Um. The question around the assumptions on collection rate and collection costs, which is an input sort of, uh, to. Part to the, to the revenue forecast, there isn't a big piece of that, um, but it, there were enough questions just around the collection. Costs and collection rate, um, independent of that as well. Um, question about whether we're modeling or we're putting into the model the year one costs versus the year five costs. And um whether we should present modeling results or deal with the revenue forecast in current year dollars. Within the assumptions to the structure of the model, um, there was a lot of questions about transparency of how costs and cost centers are actually distributed. A cop across the geographies and we heard that, um, in several different ways that you communicated that back to us about. Um, but how that works. We heard whether, or there were questions around whether the model accurately represents actual hydrology, uh, the watershed scale, a lot of questions about. Um. About potential changes that needed to be made on that hydrology layer that was an input to defining the watershed boundary. Um, questions about how we are. Refining or how, how we might refine the cost allocation, um, and how we distribute that cost across the three geographies. Um, what basis we're using to, to distribute that and so a lot of good ideas. Um, around whether we're dealing with benefits enjoyed or costs imposed. Um, and some, some philosophical questions embedded in that, which were um good to. To explore. There were questions about, um, in the current model, how we're using a flat fee for the access service within the um managed floodplain, I note that that is regressive and should. There were questions about in the current model, how we're using a flat fee for the access service within the managed floodplain. I note that that is regressive and should instead potentially. Reflect the, the benefits of avoided access disruption. And then revisiting the cost allocation between avoided damage and avoided disruption within the managed floodplain and how we're, how we're allocating the share of cost. That is, that goes to both of those benefits. There was a question about how we, whether we can shift more of the costs to commercial industries and properties while maintaining, holding to the rules, the legal framework that we have to work with within nexus and proportionality. You know, where, what are, what is our. Where, how can we operate within the discretionary? Space to potentially shift some of those allocations. And questions about how the model handles just adjustments to low income populations, potentially through discount waiver. And, and how that might impact other customers. And then finally, on the output side of things, we heard that there, we needed to specify or more specificity on what charges. What the charges would be for specific customer types and property characteristics. So not just the averages that we were presenting back to you, that the average. Customer characteristics for each group of customers we're modeling. But typical customers that, that might actually receive this fee, you know, what does, so what would this, this customer in their fee look like? Another question about how we, whether we can compare the motors, model results to what we know customers are paying now. So that for those customers who are paying something, we can put those two things side by side and understand the difference. And can we summarize costs paid by those inside and outside the managed floodplain, recognizing right now those costs are going to. The customers within the managed floodplain, we're building that out so that more people are bearing those costs, but we don't currently split it out that way in the, in the model results. So it's, it's. There was a request to, to do that a little more transparently. So here's how we're addressing each of those real quick. With the model inputs, we can and will be conducting some sensitivity analysis. We can, we can change. The assumptions around higher collection rates and collection costs within the model and we'll be doing some of that work to, to explore how changes in, in those things affect the, the ultimate. Rates and cost distributions. We will also be conducting some sensitivity analysis. What happens if we go with the year one versus the year five costs? So what is the, the, the span of difference there? And how much does it affect things? And then as we present results and this gets to outputs that you'll be seeing, we will be presenting results in your $20, $23 so that everyone has a better sense of. What those compare to in today's dollars. So for the structure assumptions, there's just few slides here because there's, there's more to go through. So we, in response to the initial question around how we distributed the costs across geographies. The, the specific costs in the revenue forecast to the different geographies that. That will, that are in the model, we provided with you all with additional information on this distribution. Based on percentages, trying to map those two things. In the future, we will fully document exactly how those. That crosswalk happens, just so that it is completely clear. With respect to the hydrology, we have an upgraded hydrology layer or when we go to make these changes, we will bring in the most up to date hydrology layer and that represents. Quite a bit of ongoing work to, to refine that. So it will be an update from when we have, for what we have now, and it should. Address some of these kind of weedy questions about where water actually flows and how we define the watershed. And then. That is related to just how we handle the watershed scale. There's a lot of questions and that gets to some of those philosophical questions about how that, how that looks. And. As you recall in the, may recall in the model structure options that we present, some of those structure options do include a. A structure without the watershed geography and we will continue to go forward with those same four structure options. So. Different combinations of geographies so that you can see how, what happens if you take that watershed out and how it, how it changes the distribution. For the cost allocation across geographies. We are, have been doing quite a bit of work with the help of the feedback we've gotten from the technical advisory group. To reconsider the way that we're distributing costs between the watershed and the managed floodplain. And that's the, the basis that we're using. Will continue, likely continue to reflect both. The cost of service and the benefit of flooding avoided to the managed floodplain from stormwater management, but we're, we are changing that distribution to a portion of the costs of pumping stormwater. To the watershed based on that influence hydrology. And apportioning the remaining stormwater costs to the managed floodplain in the district based on the avoided damage. So that is a shift from how we were looking at it before. With all stormwater costs going to that watershed geography. So splitting those costs that go to the managed floodplain in the district 50 50 between avoided damages and avoided interruptions. And. Splitting that in the managed floodplain and then splitting that again, 50 50 between the managed floodplain and the full district reflecting those direct versus indirect economic benefits. So that, that structure hasn't changed. It's really how we're, how we're dividing out the, the percentages and the. The top line percentage of stormwater. Stormwater costs to the watershed and the managed floodplain. Within the flat fee access. Note, we are updating that basis to account for some, some more proportional to benefit. Logic and we're using the, proposing to use the same trip methodology, which more closely represents that avoided disruption. So it, it isn't just a flat fee. But it reflects the potential benefit from avoiding disruption as measured through. The, the trip methodology connection to economic activity, which we're using as a basis elsewhere in the model. And then we're also considering including a minimum charge for avoiding damages to property within the managed floodplain, even. Out at higher elevations where they're currently not receiving a charge. And, and that reflects some of those baseline benefits to maintaining access throughout the, the district. That throughout the managed floodplain. Thinking about the shifting more of the cost to commercial industrial properties while maintaining nexus and proportionality. We are going to be documenting exactly the logic behind distributing. The, the distribution of costs across those customer types and, and residents as we go forward and can continue to. Consider whether those, those discretionary. Decisions reflect where we want to be on that. So we've provided additional information on that distribution and we'll continue to, to talk to you all about. Or discuss what the, what the data says and how we reflect that in the decision rules that the model includes. And then this is. Something that we've been working with the, the tag on and we've solicited your, your feedback on, but to develop a set of. Customer types that you'll see the outputs organized by not just on the averages as I mentioned, but also for a set of typical customers or representative customers that. Reflects specific characteristics that you all are particularly interested in. So not, not specific customers, I eat specific properties, but a property that is representative. Property characteristics that are representative of, of those particular points of interest that we may be interested in within the distribution. And the list is here. You've seen this before in the material we've provided. We will be going, coming forward with information on baseline costs for. For those customers that are currently paying costs, customer types that are currently. Paying. And so to the extent the data allow, we will be doing that. We, we think that that's a useful point of comparison for decision making. We'll be using the 21 22 data for each customer type. And that would be for those customers who are obviously are currently paying something within the managed floodplain. And for the request about summarizing costs by those inside and outside the managed floodplain, we are providing that. With the additional some summary material that you receive. So you can more, more transparently understand that breakdown. So. Those are the major changes that we are proposing in response to the feedback we've received. There are a few things that we've heard that are really outside the scope of modeling updates right now. Some questions came up about how charges would change if specific. Elements from the forecast were removed and we're not going to be working with it at that level. Those are other conversations outside of the modeling structure. There was questions just about the revenue forecast specifically reducing the cost. Again, those are questions that Lori will be handling later, not, not within the. Context of the things that we're dealing with directly. That will serve as an input to what we're doing, but not. Anything we're addressing today. And then. Wondering, some questions wondering about how we go forward if. How this interacts with the geo bond process specifically. And again, those questions are really outside of the scope of our current exercise of modeling structure and will be dealt with in other ways. And then the analysis of the low income pack, the low income waivers and, and how the revenue structure impacts low income customers, that's going to be. Dealt with and informed by the equity analysis that will be coming back to you with, but the income waiver process really will be addressed outside of the revenue structure modeling. But is an important part of the conversation about general affordability and. How we deal with that within the larger revenue strategy discussion. And we're making a distinction there between the revenue structure and the larger revenue strategy that might include that. So there we are. That's a lot for you all to take in. I'm happy to take questions.
Seth.
Yeah, did. The materials that you presented to, did those get sent out to the board?
I believe Colin provided a memo and.
We typically send slides out on this after the presentation. So you'll be receiving those from Wendy shortly.
Okay, so. So then at what point would it be appropriate for the board to give feedback on the presentation?
Think now would be a good time, or if you wanted to follow up with an email or a phone call, if you're not ready, that would also be super helpful.
Okay, well, I'm just the first. It's going to take a little while to process the information that was delivered today. I didn't know if. Now was our chance as a board to have a discussion about it, or if we should wait for people to. Have a chance to look at the materials before having those conversations or following up individually is what you guys are wanting.
I mean, now anything you can share now would be great and you'll certainly have more opportunities going forward and lots of venues will be back at you, I think, on several more occasions. I appreciate the need to digest a little bit, but also if there's anything you want to share now, it would be helpful. And it's also up to the board. If you need more time, let us know and we'll, we'll figure out how to create it.
Thanks. To hear something now, Mr. Reeser.
One thing that took part as part of the discussions and I don't know that was reflected in the presentation materials was we had some discussion about. How. We are looking at this in operating in capital buckets. But most people who are going to end up paying the bill, it's, they don't look at it as. The different distributions for capital versus operating, they're kind of looking at it kind of holistically. And the geo bond is. Since it's based on property tax, 95% of the revenue is going to be raised outside of the current four districts. And that there. At some point, we should at least have a discussion about whether or not. That's the, that's, that's obviously the, the method we want to pursue going forward, but whether or not that's the best method or the fairest method. Is not really a question that we've entertained. And since we're looking at the operating model through that lens. It doesn't necessarily make sense to. Have one set of glasses for operating and one set of glasses for capital. So maybe a more holistic look at. The benefits and who's paying regardless of whether it's capital or operating was part of the discussion.
Seth, I'd be interested if you see a potential option other than a geo bond to fund the capital. I think staff is unaware. Of any other viable option to generate that kind of revenue. I recognize that because it's on the property tax, there's not an ability other than. Assessed value to reflect. Any other kind of proportionality, but if you have a recommendation that we could pursue, we will pursue it.
No, I. I, I think that's the, I think that's the method that makes the most sense. But. In, in terms of what's available to us. But I'm not sure if that. Necessarily makes the most sense, big picture.
Seth, I'm curious if on the slide that you see here is your concerns are reflected in bullet point three, just for the record. To make sure that we've got that.
Take that slide down. Do you want to put it back?
Oh, it's not, it's not up. Okay. Sorry. You took the. Here we go. Can you see it now?
Yeah.
So it, it leads in with a little slightly different angle, but gets to sort of the other, the question of the geo bond interacting with the revenue structure, which. We're characterizing as outside of the scope of modeling updates, but hear you that it's relevant to the revenue strategy.
Yeah, I think, and I think that that's why I brought it up as you, you'd mentioned that. It was a point that was brought up, but there wasn't any planned follow-up, at least from Eco Northwest on. That's outside the scope of what you're looking at. And I'm just wondering if that is something that we want to look at. How would we get that in scope or whose scope it does that fall into?
Sarah, I think I can share from a process and Seth from a process perspective, real quick. I mean, I think that the staff has clearly heard the message that it's difficult to evaluate these things separately. Ecoscope is to bring us back an estimate of customer impacts. And I will say just from a facilitation perspective, I'm well aware and I know staff are and Jim is. That when, when we get a next crack at looking at customer impacts from this side of the work, that'll be at the top of everyone's mind and. Jim, I, I think I may have cut you off there and you may have been coming in to say that we're working as fast as we can to get more geo bond material out there. But what we didn't want to do from a process perspective is bring back that conversation in the midst of trying to revise our understanding of customer impacts. From the operating part and have you guys working on old assumptions that you already told us were inappropriate. To have that conversation. So, so Sarah, I guess part of, part of my suggestion would be to sort of. As we bring back the next round of analysis results here, we may be limited in our ability to look at that quantitatively. But we can certainly raise the question of, let's talk about these customer impacts with a lens of knowing that there is a geo bond impact that's going to be layered on top of that without asking any. Additional analysis from you guys.
And then just Seth, for your information, we'll be, we're putting some additional information in writing so that you'll be able to refer to it and share it with others, but. The initial preliminary estimates from our financial advisors suggested that a bond range from 150 to 200 million. Again, depending on how you step them down or pay for them. With very conservative interest rates assumptions. In other words, more expensive than we hope things will be. We're looking at a range of somewhere between say 12 and 17 cents per thousand of assessed value on a typical home. If that at least gives you a ballpark, I recognize there's more work to do and what you're really asking is whether the property tax is the appropriate way. To generate the capital that we require. I would say that. In my experience over the last seven years, watching the levy ready Columbia and, and all this work that it, it's been a pretty consistent ongoing assumption that this would be the method we would use to generate capital funding. So I think there's been an awful lot of work done to try and identify potential other sources. So it would be a major revision of the direction that this enterprise has been following for the last five or so years, if we were to move off of that.
No, and I, I don't, I'm not, again, I'm not advocating moving off of that as the, the funding mechanism. It's just, we're putting a lot of effort into slicing and dicing what's. The most appropriate way of divvying up the operating costs, looking at benefit basis, cost basis. And we're going to be asking for 150 to 250 million dollars and not having any discussion of the robust discussion we've had about. What's the appropriate way? What's a fair way? What's an equitable way of distributing that? Because we have to raise it by property tax and that's just kind of. The way it is. So on one hand, we're having a very robust discussion about the operating expenses and how that is being modeled and distributed. I just want to make sure at some point we have a similar discussion on raising a large capital amount.
So yeah. So yeah, the, the projects and so on will be coming to you in a series of scenarios and upcoming meetings, um, so that you can weigh in on, on what sort of ask we need to make now and what would be postponed or what projects we would advance and which ones we would delay or abandon. So that's coming.
Nancy.
Thanks. Um, I just have a bonehead question, which is Sarah Wright. You have.
Put your, put your mic down, Nancy. That's what this motion means. I know that's not what it looks like.
Okay. All right, I thought it was because there are two Sarahs. Okay, Sarah Wright. Uh, you have presented this today saying, this is what we've heard and this is what will be coming to you with. But you have not, you are not coming to us with it today, correct? This is a teaser for the future.
This is what we are proposing to do within the model, to the changes within the model and the mile outputs. And we have not made any of these changes.
Okay.
This information though is what we, the extent of what we expect to share, of course, elaborating and providing clarification where necessary on what the specific changes would be. So this is a precursor to.
Right, okay.
Little new model results.
Okay, thanks.
That answer your question? Okay.
Hey, James.
Not sure he heard you.
Yeah, James.
Great, can you hear me?
Hey.
Yep.
Thank, thank you. Um, I hate to interject a comment that really isn't an action item for, for the staff or the consultants to act upon, but I, I just feel compelled to not necessarily underscore Seth Reeser's comment about the, the disconnect between or the potential disconnect between the, the capital and the bond measure and the operating um and the revenue operating revenue structure that we're um talking about. I've said a couple of times throughout this process that the current districts find a way to pay for their capital investments. Those, I understand that the revenue, the current revenue is not sufficient to make the capital investments to um meet the Corps of Engineers uh project, but it does underscore again that we've basically taken any substantial capital costs out of the operating budget and moved it to an, into an uncertain future with a bond measure. And again, I apologize for bringing up something that I'm not asking you to act upon, but it's always made me a little bit nervous and um I think maybe that's why it's coming up.
I guess, I guess in, in response, I would say that we've added a million dollars a year in contingency and the initial forecast and two million dollars a year in operating capital, which are, you know, a three hundred percent increase over what we're doing today. And we're getting pushback from the board for those proposed expenditures. So um, I just want to share with you that I think we're attempting to address the ongoing sort of operating capital need with people saying it should be higher and people saying it should be lower both on this board. So we're excited to work with you to try and narrow the range of understanding and uh comfort with those investments.
Um Eric Molander.
I think I'm off mute now. So Sarah, right, uh, this really gets back to the trip methodology. And I'm really kind of concerned about uh using that even in a modified form. Um, there are financial market equivalents that give you a very clear sense of the value that's generated uh from both property damage, property damage insurance and business interruption insurance, which is really your access fee. And it is going to be very different for a homeowner than for a business that has a very high value added process that they can no longer engage in if we have flooding, flash flooding or a levy breach. And so I would encourage you to at least spend a little bit of time, uh, I'd be happy to work this through with you. Um, thinking through what that might look like in the model if we took a uh more of the analog from the insurance market and said, what is the avoided cost that businesses now uh enjoy? Uh, because we're protecting them from business loss insurance and just want to plant that seed and hopefully have, you know, thirty minute conversation with you about how we might apply that and how we would end up demonstrating that that's an equitable way of uh showing uh proportionality of benefit uh to what they're paying.
I appreciate that offer, Eric, and we'll definitely be following up.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, sounds like we'll be doing quite a bit more of this as we go along. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, and with that, we ready to go to LRC there, Colin?
Yes, we are, and we do need to call, I think, the uh Urban Board out of session and then the Levy Ready Columbia IGA Board into session.
Okay, so at this time, we will recess the meeting of the Urban Flood Safety Water Quality District Board, and we will call to order the Levy Ready Columbia uh Board of Directors. And Wendy, you want to take a little call for that?
Let's see if I can get our membership correct, starting with Nancy Henderson.
Here.
Steve Fancher, Mark Quigland, Eric Miller.
Here.
Jay Britma.
Here.
Ashton Simpson. Do you still have Ashton with us? Louis Stigman's not here, Ken Decker is not here, Corky Collier.
Here.
James Allison.
Here.
Mary Helen Kinkade is not here, Tanny Saffronson.
Here.
And I think that's it. Am I correct, Colin?
Yes, yes, the membership, uh, just as a review, the membership of the Levy Ready Columbia IGA Board is the representatives from the four cities of Portland, Gresham, Fairview and Troutdale, the four drainage districts, uh Peninsula Drainage District One, Peninsula Drainage District Two, Multnomah County Drainage District and Sandy Drainage Improvement Company and um Metro Multnomah County and um the Port of Portland. Um, so I think.
We got six out of ten members, but we are not voting today.
Yep, not voting. Um, thank you all. So uh Lori Baker and myself will be presenting today for this Levy Ready Columbia IGA Board meeting. The intergovernmental agreement signed by the project partners uh requires us to uh present an initial budget to the I, IGA Board uh before the end of February. And so this is to present that initial budget to take any feedback and kind of further conversation and we'll be bringing this back in March uh to this board to get a recommendation. I'm just going to give a, a quick review of the Levy Ready Columbia um purpose and a quick overs uh review of what efforts um Levy Ready Columbia is currently doing uh with the partners' funding as well as outside funding. Um, and then I'll hand it over to Lori who will uh present the FY twenty-four budget proposal. So first off, I already reviewed uh who all the Levy Ready Columbia IGA Board members are back in December and then January of uh twenty twenty-two. Uh, we were able to align the membership between uh the Urban Flood Safety Water Quality District Board and their representatives for those Levy Ready Columbia positions and the Levy Ready Columbia IGA Board. Um, so thank you all for being here and for continuing this effort. We are currently organized under a five-year IGA. Uh, that IGA is in the continuation of what the Levy Ready Columbia Partners came together uh almost a decade ago now. Which was to uh focus on the recertification of the levy system, uh maintaining accreditation um of that levy system for national flood insurance um under FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program. Um, updating and improving the way that the levy system is managed and funded. Um, and so that includes the work that your board, uh, the Urban Flood Safety Water Quality District Board is responsible for um in Levy Ready Columbia's efforts in establishing that new district, also uh establishing a more sustainable and equitable funding structure to support um improved levy system. So that's everything from what your board does uh to trying to build more capacity at the state and federal level both through grant funding and things like the Army Corps of Engineers Portland Metro Levy Study Project. Um, and then also uh things like um building awareness of uh local flood risk and then helping to enhance the environmental and recreational valid that, value of the managed floodplain. All those things are purposes of uh Levy Ready Columbia that's within the IGA. Uh, and then there's specific projects uh that are needed for recertification that are identified uh in that IGA. And that is a lot of what uh we have been making good headway on. So I want to briefly review what uh work has been done uh this current fiscal year and uh more work to be done this fiscal year. But first and foremost, uh, shared this with the board, I think at the last meeting, but uh big news for uh Portland Metro Levy System Study is uh receiving that construction authorization uh in the Water Resources Development Act of twenty twenty-two, uh as well as receiving the funding appropriation for uh fiscal year twenty-three to begin the pre-construction engineering design phase. The Levy Ready Columbia Partners and the budget uh support uh a lot of the staff work on the PMLS project, um as well as some of the consulting work, uh working with some outside advisors, um and also working with uh some of the consultants um that are supporting that effort. Um, and that is in partnership with the four drainage districts. The four drainage districts serve as the non-federal sponsor to the uh PMLS project with the Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, this current fiscal year and at the end of last fiscal year, I want to give a lot of kudos to uh Mark Wilcox. He is the uh Levy Ready Columbia Senior Project Manager, and very importantly, he is the uh Project Manager responsible for moving the Portland Metro Levy Study uh system study uh forward. He also is the Project Manager for the certification projects that are not in the PMLS project. Which the Levy Ready Columbia Project Partners have been funding, um advancing tho- those work. So uh this current fiscal year, especially through early fall, um Mark's been leading a group of our engineering staff, uh and outside consultants um and had, have advanced uh or significantly completed our pre-design work and feasibility analysis of three major projects that need to be done that aren't in PMLS. Um, those projects, there are details uh of the um progress on those projects in your board packet. Um, you can dig into those in an upcoming meeting. We're going to be doing uh a few deep dives into our major capital project needs, and those projects will be reviewed in more detail at that time. But um please do take a look at those projects. If you have any questions, you can reach out to myself or Mark Wilcox on those. Um, the other thing that the Levy Ready Columbia funding has supported is uh the um application for grants uh both for the PMLS project, uh for the um pre-construction engineering design phase as well as um application for grants for the non-PMLS certification projects, um and been supporting some of the real estate work that's needed um to understand what easements might be needed um to move forward with the PMLS project. There's also a lot of staff time that has been um supporting the establishment of this urban flood safety water quality district board revenue modeling development implementation at the staff time level, as well as communications, public affairs and general program development. Um, and I had already mentioned uh the advocating for uh the state's role in additional um levy funding. And so we continue to bring together a coalition of levy operators around the state and uh Levy Ready Columbia um staff uh coordinate with those, those groups to advocate for statewide levy funding. Um, so with that, uh in the interest of time, I'm going to hand it over to Lori, and I think we can take some questions at the end. I know we're uh a little bit delayed here. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. So um today is a first of two touches that you will have as the LRC IGA Board to take a look at the JCA budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Um, today, we're going to take a look at the budget calendar to give you a sense of next steps. So there'll be that set, that second meeting that we have to take a look at this budget. We'll also be looking at the forecast for the current year and that forecast process really fed into our assumptions around carryforward fund balances that are going into the proposed budget that you're seeing today as well. Um, and then we'll be reviewing that proposed budget. So that'll be your first touch on the proposed budget and then we'll be taking a look at that again. Um, so this is our budget calendar with key dates for the upcoming budget process. So we're at step one. This is the budget kickoff. We'll be going through the forecast for JCA for this current fiscal year, as well as the proposed budget for twenty-three, twenty-four, which is the final year of the LRC IGA. In March, we'll ask for your approval of that budget and the referral of that budget over to the JCA Board so that they can take a look at it. And in June, they will be adopting that budget and operating under that budget starting on July first. So the first thing we'll take a look at is in your package, you've got a detailed version of the forecasted financial results for the current fiscal year. And this schedule is just a summary of that forecast. So the beginning fund balance is forecasted to be about a hundred and five thousand dollars higher than what was in the budget, which provides us with a little bit of extra funding this year. If you'll recall, we made some corrections to the budget to offset that against the intergovernmental revenues. And we'll talk about that a little bit when we look at the proposed budget numbers, because that does have an impact on how we um present that to you and how we take a look at that under the IGA. Um, but at this point, I'll just keep moving on on the forecast. So the materials and services are projected to be about thirty-eight thousand dollars lower than budget, um with most of that positive variance sitting in consulting expenses for the year. And then the ending fund balance at the time that we did the forecast was a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, which provides carryforward funding. We've got um some anticipated increases in expenses that bring this down to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and that's what you'll see in the proposed budget. So this slide shows our projected fiscal year fund and ending fund balances. You'll see that we're estimating a carryforward balance of just a little over a hundred thousand dollars, so that a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that I spoke about the last slide. So now we're going to move forward to the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and you can find that proposed budget, the full document in your packet, starting on page nine. So in November, we came to you with an adjustment to that fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget. We implemented those corrections, including a reduction to the LRC IGA revenue schedule for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. We, we did that because we wanted to ensure transparency in our financial information to the board, as well as and assuring that our partners were only paying for costs that were incurred in that year. So um when you read through the IGA, it really does focus on uh efforts to cover the costs for the year. And we felt like it was important to be transparent with you and make those corrections to the budget. Uh, what that did was set us up for a really kind of interesting situation as we go into twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, because under the terms of the agreement, each year we have the ability to implement a five percent increase to the revenues um from the partners without making an additional funding request. So that five percent increase to the twenty-two, twenty-three budget would mean a revenue um number of three hundred and sixty-eight, almost three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Um, in order to fully, fully fund the expenditures in that last year of the LRC IGA, we're proposing both that five percent increase and an additional revenue amount that aligns to the original revenue schedule for the JCA. So that four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars that you're seeing um isn't really additional proposed revenue, but it's the revenue that takes us to um the original schedule, which was the eight hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. So our revenue is, our revenue request in the proposed budget is to go back to the original schedule of the revenue of eight hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. All right. So this schedule shows the total partner contributions for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. It also shows our adjusted contributions for twenty-two, twenty-three, so you can see that they went down by a pretty significant amount um just to cover, because we had a. because we had a pretty large carryforward fund balance in this fiscal year. In '23-'24, you can see that we're pushing back to the original schedule. So had '22-'23 remained on the original schedule, you would have seen a 5% increase in '22-'23, and you would see that the $841,000 that is, that's being requested for '23-'24 is a 5% increase on that number. As we understand it, our partners have this $841,000 number in their budget process. This has been the number that people are anticipating, and it's the number that we're proposing for the upcoming year. So this is a summary of the resources that are included in the proposed '23-'24 budget. We've got that estimated fund balance carryforward of $130,000, which is slightly lower than our forecast because of some additional costs that we're estimating at this point. The contract revenue aligns with the numbers that we discussed on the previous slide. And the interest is the amount of earnings that we anticipate on the local government investment pool for the JCA. This is on the expenditure side, and given that this is the final year for the JCA or the LRC IGA agreement, we anticipate spending all of these remaining funds. Professional services includes audit, legal services, general consulting, and community relations. There's a decrease of $46,000 in '23-'24. We've got a decrease of $10,000 in community relations and a $35,000 reduction in project facilitation, which is, was in the budget in '22-'23 and is not in the budget for '23-'24. The first four line items in capital outlay reflect continued support from the MCDD staff to ensure that the projects are moving forward. This funding supports three positions at a .8 FTE for a total of 2.4 FTE, which is consistent with previous years. And then there's the $166,000 in certification projects. This is the local match to the grant funding that's anticipated for those non-PMLS project designs. If the grant funding isn't received, then this, this work would not move forward. The total grant is $800,000 and the total match is $200,000. We've got 166 in the '23-'24 budget because we're anticipating spending a portion of that money during '22-'23. So that's why there's a difference between the 200,000 and the 166. Okay, and with that, I am going to stop sharing. That was really fast. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer those now. You will have a second look at these numbers in March when we bring this back for us to request that you refer this forward to the JCA Board. So if this was too fast and too furious, I'm happy to take questions in between now and the next board meeting as well, if you think of things that you're not sure about that are included in this budget. But with that, I will stop talking and see if I have any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Lori? Oh, Corky.
It, it looks relatively speaking straightforward. Is there something we should have questions of? Is there, or do you have any concerns about it?
No, I think it's just the stressful part is seeing all of these entities kind of ramping down when we haven't really answered the questions about how to move forward with the urban district. And I think, you know, that's the urgency you'll start to sense from me and from the rest of us on staff, is that we really need to find some answers and some solutions for moving forward with the urban districts so that we're not caught in the situation where we've ran out of funding to keep going, but don't have that new solution quite ready to go. So that's my, that's where I, you know, lose sleep and wake up at 2:00 in the morning and start to think creatively about how we get to those solutions. But this budget itself, I think, is pretty, it's pretty consistent with what we've done with the staffing in the past. So it allows that project work to continue. So I think there's really no, no surprises. Just the unique nature of the IGA requires that we look at the two components of the revenue request to make sure that we're following along the steps that we need to, to get the revenues in here to cover the costs.
Eric Mueller.
Yeah, I think one question for Lori and maybe one for Colin. But if, back to your slide on the proposed partner contributions, the, the table that you had laid out, the contribution in the '22-'23 column is, of course, less than it was in the 2021 and, and in the '23-'24. And that reflects that you actually build the various parties less than what was originally budgeted, correct?
That's correct. So we made those adjustments to the budget to reflect that larger carryforward fund balance that happened that was unanticipated.
Okay, so for most of the agencies, that, that means we're going to have a budget underspend for that line item in our own budgets.
In the current year.
This year.
Briefly, briefly.
Well, briefly, but I, just as I'm thinking about explaining to my budget committee why there's such a dramatic quote increase next year, it's really because we didn't have to spend as much as we had planned on this year. So it, 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 it makes it look worse than really what the circumstance is. So over the course of the three years, is it, would it be correct to say we ended up spending less than what we had planned on?
Yes, that's, that's correct, and I appreciate your description of it, because you made that description more eloquently than I. I tried really hard to kind of explain that, but I like your version better.
Okay, great, thank you. I just want to make sure I understood that right. So for my own purposes of budgeting, wearing my non, non-board member hat for the city of Troutdale, I have a budget number I can use now in that last column for coming year.
That's correct.
Okay, great. And then the question, I guess, for Colin is just from a practical standpoint, you know, there's all these projects that been working on, and you've been talking about making the progress and the studies and so on and so forth. What happens if we're making great progress, but we, you know, it's just going to take another six months? Does the IGA allow for an extension? Or are we all going to turn into, what is that, Cinderella that does midnight or whatever it is?
A pumpkin.
But why doesn't the glass slipper turn into something different if everything else changes? No, it's a, that's a really great question. So I, I think we do want to explore if there is an appetite for extending. So what we have planned and with our support from, or at least application for support from Business Oregon, we can move those non-PMLS projects forward to about a 60% design. Some of that can transfer over to the Urban Flood Safety Water Quality District. The grant funding can go over there. We plan to pay the local portion first so that that is cleared. But it really doesn't answer your question of, we haven't completed the design of the projects. We do have great progress on them. And then we have identified the construction funding, you know, anticipated is through the general obligation bond. But getting us to that finish line, that, that gap, if there is an appetite for continuing through the IGA or additional supplemental years to what we currently have in the IGA, I think we, we should open that conversation up. This one goes through June 30th of 2024. So there is about 18 months before that expires. So I think now is a good time to take a look at what do we get to get us to the finish line and also to consider the funding in that current LRC IGA funding from the partners that goes and contributes to the advancement of the Urban Flood Safety Water Quality District, so actually setting up that board. So if everyone is okay, I think we might want to open that for a conversation so that you can bring that to other people in your organizations to see what appetite looks like and what we could propose.
And in the meantime, I will prohibit purchase of any glass slippers because they're too expensive.
They don't last either. Get something durable. Can I just go?
Have this conversation at our next meeting in March?
I think we, it may be then or the following meeting. I think some of the importance of this topic will come up as we talk to the city managers about revenue collection and where that stands. So I suspect those two are going to end up being linked in some fashion. So, and then throw in the third linkage is the line of credit from City of Portland going away. So those three things will need to be considered as a whole, I believe.
But in the meantime, we can all be thinking about what that looks like.
That would be terrific if you have the capacity to do that.
Okay, all right. Nancy?
Yeah, just a selfish question. Lori, do you have time after this meeting to check in?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
And I actually have a meeting scheduled that involves what you're probably going to ask me after this meeting.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other questions? And if not, then we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting of the Levy Ready Columbia Board. And we will reconvene the Urban Flood Safety Water Quality District Board meeting. And then we will adjourn.
Thank you all very much for your time today and for the good discussion and feedback, and more to come, and please get in touch if there's something that you want to know in between meetings, please.
All right.
Kenny, thank you so much for sharing.
You bet.
Yeah, thank you.
You guys all.